Are you ready, Mr. Ferrari, or what?
Let's do it.
So do we not have a --
I was trying to think of it, too.
5:30, you want me to call finance committee? All right, the finance committee for order. The first agenda item is agreement between the City of Sanctity and the building trades. May I ask you?
We've completed negotiations with building trades with the exception of those covered by the IBW, which is electrical works. And the salary that is included in your package is consistent with the other agreements. Do you have any other project or other specific agreements? These only represent all the inquiries. So it's not any specific question.
Questions, comments? Mr. Rudy Baron?
$2,300, $500 in signing bonus, not in base. What's that?
It doesn't, they get $500, but it doesn't go in the base. So it's a one-time payment as opposed to going into the base and then it will be carried forward in years to come.
Other questions?
So it's not in the base signing?
It's not carried forward.
It is not carried forward?
Correct.
Okay.
If it wasn't in base, then it would be carried forward. It's a one-time, it's not a fact. Base salary will be in subsequent years, the percentage increases calculated.
Other questions, comments?
Just comments again. I want to thank everybody who was working on this contract we have in the city. And I noticed that the big savings here is going to be obviously through insurance piece.
Again, it's a bigger part if we're moving to one plan, again, we're looking to standardize health care where we are self-insured, looking for our wellness program, and ongoing participation as we go forward with our programs to look for ways to control and better leverage our health care dollars.
And continue.
Yes.
Other questions or comments? So I need a motion to approve this.
One moment.
Hold on. I gotta get my bear ready. Okay, Mr. Kozier, Mr. Rudy Baron is also on the committee as a second. Allos in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Next, we have the Upper East Street presentation.
They'll be available on the night of the hearing.
Oh, okay. So it's just what, the information in your packet? Did anyone have any questions that they want to put forth to the executive director of the bid regarding the budget that was included in the packet? Yes?
I'm checking my tab.
Oh. Don't see it too much.
There's no action required tonight.
Right, it's a public hearing? Oh, sorry, it didn't have that on here. So it's just a proper public hearing?
Right.
All right, very good. Then I'll ask for a motion. Okay, Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Rudy Baron. Allos in favor?
Aye.
Great, anything else to come before the finance committee? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Mr. Rudy Baron, move. Mr. Kozier, second. Allos in favor?
Aye.
We now call to order the administrative efficiency committee, and we have one added before us. It's the best day of purchasing. I'm bringing out Mr. Franch to lead us through this.
What we're asking for tonight is to call for a public hearing. This would be a local law which allows for best value award. Currently, the way that the law reads, the only way you can award is the lowest responsible bidder. What this allows you to do is take into account other costs that might be in that. What we handed out was a copy of the Office of Comptrollers guidance book for local municipalities, and they show you how the cost benefit can be done. And if you have an independent review that shows you that your actual cost of usage is going to drive up that item more, then you don't have to go with the lowest bid, you go with the best value bid. Now, that has to be laid out within your bid specification so that everybody knows what you're doing in advance, but it's really about making sure you have a common sense way that you do your awards. You don't go with something that's more expensive in the long run. Additionally, what this allows you to do is opt into national cooperatives, and that's actually a very good area. A lot of other municipalities around the country, about half of them, actually do best value awards. Under current law, unless you have a best value law locally, you can't use any of those cooperatives. So this will allow us to access those, and many of those are nationwide purchasing cooperatives that rating their contracts with these national organizations have lines which guarantees that that is the lowest rate they will offer to any municipality. This will allow us to access those. Yes?
Along with this, because now we're like diverting from sometimes possibly the lowest bid, is there training that comes along to our department managers that enables them to choose the best value? Because certainly we want to, if we're not going with the lowest bid, we want them to know what, you know what I mean?
It's got to be quantitative. You can't do it based on qualities. You have to have some kind of an independent study, and you have to set those parameters in the bid itself. So you can't have in fact look at it and say, wait, I think this would be cheaper. You'd have to rebid if you didn't lay out within the bid that this is how you --
But maybe, example would be, you're buying cars. You get a car that is slightly cheaper, but the one that's more expensive would get better gas mileage. So the lifespan of the vehicle, you would pay a little bit more for the car today, but the mileage would make up the difference. So you would have to articulate that in the award.
In the bid, probably.
And let me just interject, David, if I can. This is only, I'm basically anticipate to be $20,000 and over, correct?
Yeah, it's actually small items.
And they would go back to the council.
Yeah, it would still have to be awarded by the council. And the other portion of it, too, is it allows you to access these national cooperatives, which gets you access to these larger things.
Good stuff.
It's just a little bit of a shift. So in a little bit of a shift, it's always good that everybody is educated, knows the whole process, and the benefits of said process.
And it would still be reviewed by finance and purchasing, and then it would still come to the council. So they wouldn't, no department would be acting independently on determining what a best value is.
Great.
And again, just further comments. Skinty County has already moved forward on this as well. This is the Towne County, Alvin County. So this is not new to the URET. It's just something, again, we're trying to take advantage of the best pricing, the best value, as you said.
Yeah, this is something that was called for by the state purchasing association. They advocated this on the state level because particularly as the state government has lessened the number of contracts that they let. One of the things localities rely on is OGS contracts nationwide. As the state has reduced those, we've become more reliant on our own bids or cooperatives. This just allows us to access those in other places.
Any other questions? All right, Ms. Porterfield, second. Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Say aye. Aye, any votes. Thank you. Any else to come before our committee here? If so, I'll just --
I'd like to raise something.
Go ahead.
In terms of the city council, I raised this before years ago when I first found the council, and I'd like to raise again that, as far as I know, there's no document that gives procedures of how the council works and things like that. And I think it's something we really should be taking a look at at this point, putting something in writing. So as new council members come on board, that is there, so it's not just passing along information by word of mouth. I just think it's extremely important. Any other procedural, any other body of government has procedures written writing? We don't, as I'm aware of, and I think that we should take a look at. I know when I brought it up a couple of years ago, we only had one person who put this off. But staff's increased now, so I think it's something, especially considering the fact that conceivably, Miss King said that she's looking in right now, she has the historical knowledge on the council. I just think that we could have that kind of stuff in writing. But it better do this council in future practice.
Something I wouldn't mind working through our committee here, if that's okay with you, Mr. King.
That'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, would you give Dave Franch and staff, if you're okay with that?
Sure.
I know he's got several hats already, but it's another one to throw on top of. And here's a good point. You know, I know when it came on MHA, Richard Owen gave us a binder that was about 800 pages thick, but we're not going to go that much, obviously. But I think you're right. I think it's a good point, especially with, you know, Mr. Ferrari here in the council. Just gave some points across this. So everybody okay with that, Mr. King? Are you okay with working that?
Absolutely, yeah.
It'll take a few weeks, probably, after now, we'll get something we got for you.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you, Ms. Porterfield. Appreciate that. And motion to adjourn? Ms. Porterfield, second. All in favor, say aye. And our floor is closed.
Okay, I'll call to order city development and planning. The first item on the agenda is to do a ceremonial resolution for Winifred Warlock, who is a local author.
Just, you know, Schenectady inch has, I think, seven or eight books now. Just a recognition of one of the talented citizens of our fine city.
Good. So anyway, I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Ferrari, okay. Seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the DSAD 2015 budget. We had the public hearing last week. Only two people spoke in support of, no one spoke against it. So Colleen is here to answer any questions anybody has. Ms. Porterfield?
Colleen, I was asked for health classification on him, so I'm going to ask you in terms on the record. So the $50,000 that the city pays every year, how does that spend, or does it go towards surplus? How is, how is that allocated?
It's right allocated in the budget that was presented to you. You look, there's three items on page three of three. You'll notice there is a line item. Parking over suitable. Number nine is the income line. If you add that along with the appropriation number along the bottom, and the $3,000 to the remaining parking funds, you'll see the $50,000 is fully accounted for within that budget.
Does that even go towards the surplus?
Well, like I said, there's a $3,000, but already this year with anticipation with health insurance increases and premiums, that $3,000 surplus is pretty much zero at this point, because this is just a budget that was prepared back in October. So there are certain things that I know that are coming online that will actually resolve that number down to pretty much zero. So there is no money that will be put into the general fund balance, probably. But proposed budget that you're looking at proposes a $3,000 general fund money. So, but it's not very much. It's just for cash flow, for the most part.
Okay, Mr. Rudy Baron?
In regards to churches?
Yeah.
They're slated to be charged a fee. Is there some way that we can exempt these churches? I know they're going through a difficult time, the churches and things like that. We don't want to tax them more?
Well, that would be, I mean, you're the taxing entity. This is your special assessment district. But it is a special assessment, so it's similar to your, it is similar to your sewer fees, your water fees, you know? They're paying a rate based off of being provided a service. So special assessment, they are not exempt from special assessment, which is what this is. This is your special assessment district, and so they do pay, but they do benefit from all the services that we provide. We do litter pickup, we do flower baskets, all the parishioners see all of those things. I've actually even had conversations with local leaders in the churches, and they believe that they see the benefits when they have special events at their things. We promote those within our weekly emails. They are listed in all of our publications, on our visitor guide and map, so people who are coming into town, people who have weddings, funerals, those types of things, those are all part of those things. So they do have a huge benefit. It's not like, you know, that they don't see a benefit from the --
No, I understand that they have a benefit, but then, you know, sometimes we have to like look at their funding, you know?
You'd have to.
They've not been getting a lot of funding, you know, for the past couple of years.
Yeah, to your point, though, you'd have to go back to state legislation, I believe.
For exemption?
Yeah, Carl would know that better than I would, but it's a special assessment district, and they're not exempt from special assessment. So it's, you know, there's, this is home rule legislation. I guess you could probably change home rule legislation a little bit, but to exempt them within your, currently, that's not, they're not exempt by legislation.
And again, they're paying a lower rate, though, correct? They're not paying the same as a business.
No, it's everybody pays, it's based off of three different factors.
The zones, the different zones.
Yes. So the city special assessment district has three primary factors, where your property is located, the gross floor area of your property, and the frontage of your property. So you get, so depending on where that church is located within the district, you pay a different demand rate.
And again, if we exempt them, then that throws off your budget, and then we have
Well, it exempts them, that, it just means that if they were similar to, say, the City of Schenectady, obviously, on property in the district.
Right.
So you're exempt from your own special assessment. So essentially, what that money does, the levy that we're proposing to 60 is apportioned out amongst, right now, 449 assessable parcels within downtown. So if the number, the whole number became some other number, say it became like 350 because you exempted the churches, then that $260,000 would wind up being a portion amongst a fewer number of parcels within the district. So it's just, it's just, you know, putting it from one pot into a different, and you're just reapportioning it out.
Very good.
Just trying to help.
More discussions then.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's something, I mean, essentially, it's, you know, we went, I'm going to say it was 2010, where the formula by which the assessment is configured was redone in 2010. It's not to say that you couldn't, you know, redo that formula by which, you know, properties are, and then potentially make a note to exempt, you know, houses of worship, I guess, you know, within that legislation. But that would be something that, you know, Carl would have to look at within his, you know? And I would, and I would say, I would caution, that would not be something I would say you could do for 2015. It would definitely be something you would have to look at for 2016. Because for timeline standpoint, you do need to vote on this next week, because your tax department will be very upset with all of us if we don't get, because they have to hand enter all of those parcels. So they have to hand enter the final fees, so the tax bill will be on time.
Carl has something that we can look into.
Not to give you more work.
Get back to us maybe sometime, two weeks, maybe a month or so.
Whenever you like.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Riggi?
Yes, St. John's Church is included in this?
Not, yes, not, they're both the school facility, not the church itself. It's only the part, it's only the piece of property that actually is in the district that borders, that not terrace.
Yeah, because I talked to some of the finance here today. They went from, they're going, they pay 600 now, it's going to go to 750, so that's about 24 percent increase. And when I talked to the person, they don't know what they're getting for this. That's the question was posed to me. What are they getting for the 750 bucks a year? You know, churches are up against it. Discretionary money is shrinking, so I think this is really something we have to look at. And I did ask Jim, but he never responded. I wanted a list of how many churches and whether they're assessed, and will it be assessed if this budget passes. Can I get that this week's?
Actually, with, again, the proposed role is in your city assessor's office, so I would ask Molly for that. You know, she could break that out for you.
And he didn't respond, so I got no way of knowing that. I did ask for the role, and then I was told I couldn't get it until the budget passed.
Well, the final role is not available until the budget is passed, so it would be a question on whether or not your assessor, Molly, wanted to sit down with you and go through that. I mean, we did have mail to every single individual property owner, obviously, that letter that you referenced. So that's how they know what their individual, yes, but we don't disseminate that information.
Do you have, just off the top of my head, how many churches are we talking about? Do you have it?
I don't know. There's at least probably 10, I would imagine. Seed of Abraham, Methodist Church, St. John's, St. Joe's, First Presbyterian, First Reformed, that's seven. Which one? That's Seed of Abraham, yeah. Yeah, so there's like seven at this point. Yeah, that are in downtown proper. But again, every single one of those properties has received a letter. But if you want the full role, you know, you would need to go sit and talk to Molly at this point. Because we just help the city essentially portion out those things by a spreadsheet. But it's Molly, and he's your city assessor, who would need to go through that with you.
Any other questions? All right. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve this. Okay, Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Mr. Ferrari. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. Okay, and item number three, the ordinance about the sale of tobacco products. Again, we had the public hearing for that. Any other questions about that? Comments? Ms. Porterfield?
There was some questions that were raised at the public hearing in terms of the possibility to the school and, I don't know, just some of the things. In terms of the tobacco shop, which is basically from this particular, you could back all that you hear. So, and then the 1,000 feet, how does that determination, how does that determination come up? But I think many of the people asked that particular question as well.
If I could answer that, give my general feedback on the public hearing. We put too many parts into this legislation. The first one was prohibition on advertising outside of the tobacco shops, convenience stores. When we put that in, we knew it was a somewhat unsettled legal area, but we wanted, if you want a public hearing, get some feedback. And it did draw some feedback, both in public hearing and from outside of there. And based on that, over the weekend, I took another mark and looked at it. And at this point in time, I'm going to recommend to the council that we remove that part of the legislation, such that it really come down one way or the other, because I'd be a lot more comfortable if we don't leave ourselves, hoping to be challenged on that right now. The other component of this was, we were discussing about the 1,000 feet, the prohibition on tobacco sales. That, I'm still comfortable, is something that if we want to, we can move forward with. But what I request is two weeks for me to really dig into there, because in order to do something like this, you've got to have a strong justification for it, to show why there's a need, what it's meant to do, and then that this 1,000 feet doesn't create a de facto prohibition on sales. So just looking at how much the city would actually block, and how there was an area that was fairly large that wouldn't be able to have any sales. So I'm confident we can do it, just one little more time to make sure that it's all written correctly, so we can withstand any challenge that could come.
Okay, so you want to just hold, basically, hold this, put this back in committee in two weeks and?
We do when we do that, that's my request.
Okay. Ms. Franch?
Just a question before we do that. So in the legislation, a grandfather's in any current stores that are within 1,000 feet, that's the way I read it, correct? So wouldn't be closing stores. But I thought one of the interesting things somebody brought up is, you know, we do change our schools, right? We do move our schools around and charter schools open, or whatever the case may be. Can we also put in a grandfathering that if we have a new school that wants to build an location within 1,000 feet of an existing store, that we're not shutting that business down? So I think that's just as important of a grandfather clause. You know, because you have a quarter store that's a reputable business for 30 years, and all of a sudden, the charter pool opens, and they're like, sorry, you're within 1,000 feet. So I would just like to see that grandfather, you know, that other portion of it considered to be added.
We definitely have something to address this situation. And to be clear, though, this is just about the sale of tobacco. This isn't about closing convenience stores.
Well, right, but we know that that can make or break the success of a business if we're taking that away. Not that I'm condoning, you know, tobacco sales, but, you know, in all fairness. So I just, because we're grandfathering in the existing businesses, I think it's fair to do it the other way also. The other comment I had is about the 20 percent of the window, and I think that's, is that in the other legislation that on this one? My other, my only comment on that is, haven't we always had that in, for businesses? Because I remember when I worked in the Chamber and Rudnick's also, Rudnick's was told they had to clear out their window and only have 20 percent of their, you know what I mean, window covered. So that's, as far as comments on that, it's something that, as far as I knew, was already a requirement of our businesses, in our code.
It may have been, but I don't think it's something that, like, the people came through planning and all that, that was something that was said to them, because so many of these stores come, and they just plaster stuff all over. So maybe it wasn't the legislation, but I don't know if it's something that was strictly enforced.
Right, and not necessarily just for convenience, but it's like for all businesses, for all business windows. I mean, it makes sense, you know? I mean, see if there's a fire in there, you know? If the place was on fire and the windows are completely covered, how would anybody know?
Mr. Kozier?
Thank you. And Judy Ruth Meyer, Ruth Meyer was here, I guess she spoke from the Tobacco Free Coalition. She was going to give us the copy of the maps. Did we get copies of those maps that she, and she had all the convenience stores pointed out for us and where they were in the City of Schenectady that were selling tobacco products? And I'd asked her before she left, and she said she was going to get it to us, so obviously we're all looking, so obviously we didn't get that. Because the other concern that I, just so clarity on our part, is one of the pieces here, if any district is zoned in the residential area, the hours show the limits at the 5:11 p.m., 5:00 a.m., 11:00 p.m. Is there any way that we can, you can show us in some sort of spread or map which stores we're talking, which areas we're talking about? So it's a little bit easier for us to, again, we're saying that sometimes, sometimes State Street Y and whatever, well, I'm just trying to get this clear, State and Frank, if there's one on the corner that we've always had problems with. Is that residential, is that already zoned business area? You know, just so we can kind of say, you know, these are the hours, we know for a fact that city council folks that these have the hours of operation. I just think it's important for us to kind of know what is deemed residential, what these stores are.
You could have Steve Strickland center around the, use a new map so that you would know whether designated residential, it's commercial, it's an excuse, so that we can see.
I just threw that in there, you know, like we do, just let us know.
Do you want our copies? You just want some?
Well, try to, it's fine. Somebody I didn't visibly see, because I think it's a lot easier that way.
But you have them?
I have them for the record. I can distribute.
And again, the points you made, I made, you folks made, we got a couple of charts, so that's really sort of, it's important to check. But I think it's important legislation. I think it's very important that we continue to follow up with this. I think it's, the smoking issue is certainly very important. I mean, my goodness, I'm getting sick of those commercials on TV, but boy, they drag the point home.
Oh, yeah.
Every time I see that. And it really is, I think your children matter, really be affected by this. And I just think it's a way for us to move forward on this, and I appreciate all the work on putting this together for us.
Mr. Thorne says he does have a copy of that map.
He did.
He will make copies and get it out there.
Yeah, I didn't realize it wasn't distributed. But I have them for the record, and I can distribute it. That's all right. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're holding number three.
Does that map show zone issues?
No, it doesn't.
So that's Steve sending the.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll hold item number three, and any other issues regarding with item number four, the convenience stores and secondhand cell phone stores?
Are we holding that one?
I was going to say, we should probably hold both.
Again, I believe I can be ready and have just a couple of small edits to you by end of this week, if you want to move forward with that one next week. Does it work out as two separate public hearings?
I don't have strong feelings one way or the other.
Well, one gentleman, I don't remember where he's from, I just wrote his name down, Jim, was the person. I think that we should just make it careful that we are not just changing convenience stores, this is a particular thing, convenience stores only. And so that it, I understand the purpose of it, and we're basically trying to make sure that convenience stores operate by certain guidelines, et cetera. I wonder what the concerns I do have is, though, that there are some convenience stores who's, that's for livelihood, that's how they feed and drink, et cetera, so I want to make sure that as we're looking at this legislation, there's nothing that could cause any of those sort of, the negatives impacted. So, I'd like to...
Do I have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
So, we get it right?
Yeah, get it right the first time.
Okay, then we will move on to item number five, which is a revocable permit for the right side of the tracks at 308 Union Street. Mr. Wallen.
So, you have a revocable permit, number 588, to the right side of the tracks. The business is more affectionately known as Center Street Pub on Union Street, however, this affects it north Broadway. What they'd like to do is, on this one sketch that you see in the middle on page three or five, they'd like to attach some ornamental flags to the top of the building. In addition, we did a site, a visit to the site, and they did have some planters and some lights out front that we'd also like to add to this permit, as they would also fall under revocable. So, what we'd like to do is issue a revocable permit for flags, planters, and decorative lighting for Center Street Pub, which is known as right side of the track.
So, is track, we got a bar coming in or what?
Yeah, I was certainly now on that one.
Right side of the track.
Right side of the track, that's pretty funny.
Okay, questions?
I can add that it's the left side of the track.
Is that the wrong side of the track?
Ms. Parazza.
I have no idea what sort of, I don't even know what I want to use. The flags, do we have any kind of restrictions on flags? Does the planning commission have oversight on what the flags say? I mean, can they say sex, drugs, rock and roll going down the side of a bar? You know, not that I'm saying they do everything with a lot of taste, and they're a well-run business and all of that, but with the flags coming over the city right away, do, does the city have any control over how well-kept the flags are, right? Because they can start to look very tattered. What the flags actually say, those types of things, or is that something not...
It is a revocable permit, so it can be, we can revoke it if we find that it's unacceptable of city standards. The, what the, the content of the flags, I believe that I would like to work with Christine on that development, because I think that's something that would have to go through some kind of a planning, would it be to make sure, usually they're solid color flags that have something to do with, you know, this was a beer hall or something like that. But you're right, I don't, they didn't submit the content that'll be on those flags, I can ask for that in writing to put it on there. However, typically, what the engineering is mostly concerned with is, you know, the, is it safe, is it away?
Sure.
And, you know, is it in the right of way? But I can work with development on that, and we can, we can find out and flush that out and make sure that no inappropriate content goes on flags.
And they're talking about putting it at the top of the building, off the top of the building, so there wouldn't be any...
That's what it looks like on the sketch.
There wouldn't be any issue with, like, visibility going down the street or, like, because, you know, people are coming out of 20 North, so if they were on the sidewalk, flagging it could, you know, hinder visibility of pedestrians and things like that.
I believe, I believe Colleen has checked with the owner. We, what they're looking at is at the top couple of feet of the building, is kind of to have, at an angle out, kind of a vanner arms out.
It would look festive and great.
Right. But I can follow up with them on what the content of the flags are.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this. Ms. Portiffield, second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. Ceremonial resolution for Trusco Bank, probably all read the article in the paper that they, with all the work they did in Quack and Bush Park, and it just seemed like it would be appropriate to recognize that. Okay? Okay, you move it. Second to Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye. Okay. And these, building demolition and debris removal. We have a presentation. Knock it down.
Could you have everyone's copy of this document, and then if you're... I just wanted to give everyone an update as to the 108 room after the successful demolition of 23 Broadway and delivery next steps, next round of demos, and then what I brought forward tonight is the approval of the bid award and contract for the demolition. So, we're kind of embarking on the first round of demos, decided to take them in portions of the easiest rate of demolition. So, we targeted six specifically citywide. These ones have been identified as the most dangerous, one of the present we have, sitting around the city. The worst of the worst are identified by the buildings inspector and the former director of operations building, where they're mostly burnouts, very visible, light, kind of signs of community despair. So, I wrote a little list there, comprised by neighborhoods, Central State Street, Queens, 206, Division 107, Henry, Mont Pleasant is 1150 Cutler, 1055 Pleasant, Vale is 12 Grove Place, and Woodlawn is 2934 Albany Street. And I just wanted to show you some photos, a little bit darker, I think, that's a little bit better. But the vision, you can't see as bad as it is, but it's actually really bad, covered by night trees, but, you know, they're, they're not looking the best, put it that way. So, that's those two. Mont Pleasant, these are in pretty rough shape as well, and 1150 Cutler is in a very visible location. And then to get into Vale and Woodlawn Grove, obviously, is, is just in really, really bad condition. So, where we are right now, we solicited bids for the demolition of these first six earlier this month. We held a pre-bid conference for any interested bidders. There actually had a lot of people attend. Our affirmative action officer was involved in the creation of the bid, as were multiple other city departments that are involved in the process, including the building inspector and engineering. We opened the bids last Wednesday, so we had five people submit bids. They were very competitive, and our lowest called by the bidder, Jackson Demolition Services, in the amount of $174,000, which is actually really well below our estimates, but we're very, very happy. About 29,000 properties, really very compelling, you can't beat it.
What are our expectations of?
So, next steps, we need to schedule a, we're working on a schedule, like, pre-construction meeting with Jackson Demolition to approve the site plans and safety measures as we continue to go forward with each of the demolitions, either plans for each structure. Everyone's going to be a little bit different on a case-by-case basis. We're also going to be working with PSI to ensure compliance on environmental regulations and safety, and John Tranter from PSI is here, so I just wanted to introduce him, in case anyone has any questions about the environmental regulations or compliance and that kind of regard. And in terms of disposition, we've got an interesting next phase of this. We have to take each property as a case-by-case basis, really like in an analytical approach. You know, the first thing we'd like to do would be to have adjacent property owner lock consolidation, just to help thin out, give people some more space, stuff like that. It's not always proven, some of these properties, it's not going to be something we need to. So, we're also working at reuse by other partners, including VNI, Community Land Trust, Youth Build, and the Capital District Community Gardens, which started having a conversation with the Secretary of Defense there, about starting a really robust community garden program here. And then less than not leaves green space, which is always a nice thing, so every now and then, we have a little patch of grass for residents to use. And that is there and at. If anyone has any questions, just inside of you, just to award the contacts for the demolition bid.
Questions, Ms. Drighy.
Well, for Jack and the mayor, work's going to be done on the bridge, eventually, by the Old Street Bridge. I'm thinking about that house on the corner that's on the list, could that be worked into that contract, if something needed staging area, or whatever's going to happen with the bridge? Is that something that could be worked in?
It may be, to get it back down, with the bridge closed, and some of the scenarios were, the bridge itself would be the staging area, so it may not be as critical to have adjacent property, even though some of it, we, getting access, and most of it, I think, they can't do it from the bridge surface itself, it'll be coming up along the road and tracks, and then putting lift or scaffolding to go up on the support members. But to answer your question, yes, it's possible, but we're looking at other options at the same time.
Just maybe that's what could go on the house, is the fact that they're probably doing the contract.
Oh, for the demolition? Oh, no, no. The state's not going to give us money to demo something that's not part of the bridge.
So, it would be a staging area, if you're correct, or...
No.
No.
If the space is there, we might be, again, looking at using the surface area of the bridge as the staging area.
What a nice idea, though.
Try to sneak in one there.
Yes, Mr. Kozier.
So, Jack here, on this mayor, what is the timeframe for these homes coming down? Are we looking December, January?
We're hoping, hoping the end of the year, but it might push into January, it doesn't matter.
Okay, very good. Very impressed with the biddings, too. I see this $650,000, $650,000 difference between, the $750,000 difference, it's really incredible, the differences, you know, how close the bidding was. It's good to see that, it's good to see that we had, you know, four or five folks coming out for it. So, I appreciate the work on that as well, so.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this. Okay, Ms. Portiffield, second by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? All right. All right, if there's no other business to come before city development and planning, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay? Ms. Portiffield, second by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye.
You know what, I'm sorry. We're going to do the Tombo, I don't know. I think you said government option, wanted it under, didn't you?
Well, in that case, I'll call it on the next order. Discussion, discussion regarding the legislative initiative from the Senate for economic growth.
You all got a copy of that? The mayor sent it to us, kind of asking for some feedback, or either ideas in here that you supported, or other ideas that you had. Mayor, do you want to talk about this just?
Goodness, at the annual legislative package, it goes out, and so it's approved, I think, in some of the leaders of our communities, and trying to reach out to individual cities, towns, and villages within the county city service, the ICPG, to begin trying to build a broader base of support for some of the legislative initiatives.
Ms. Parazza. Did you get your email?
Yes, I sent you an email. To me, three was certainly a footway up on what I thought was something that was important. Also, seven and 10, and then, of course, I thought 11, and that's more than two or three. But then, you know, mandate relief is always important, and the local sales tax renewals, although it's not a terribly cumbersome thing, be on my secondary wish list. But I saw that three, I think I said, yeah, three and seven and 10, I, I felt were right in line with what we're trying to do in the city, and things that are really supporting our initiative.
But if you were adding more, you'd add one, five, and 11?
Eleven.
I'd add 11 first, and then one and five. I mean, we all want mandate relief, we talked about mandate relief, we're talking about mandate relief.
Right.
You know, if all every last bit of air sucked out of the room, when it would be a wonderful thing, but it, I don't know if that's as feasible as the other things, so...
Yeah. Now, and I had identified the same ones that you did. Ms. Portiffield?
And I, maybe, I think this one, it's something I think we should consider, you know, we all want it, and I know that it's something that everybody wants, but I think it's something that I'm strongly support. The other one is on number eight, to increase opportunities for small projects and the quality funding application process. I, I think it's important that smaller projects have, have an opportunity to be able to get some of the funding. Generally speaking, it's larger projects that are looking at funding and funded, so there are a lot of small projects who, you know, really have good ideas and would benefit the communities that are in, so I think that number eight is one that I would like to see as well.
Okay. Any others? Go ahead.
And lastly, number 10, the infrastructure, we need to fund, certainly, infrastructure is something, our infrastructure needs some improvement.
Absolutely.
So, I would say number 10 is well.
Yeah, I would agree completely. Any other thoughts? Just pretty much in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, does that give you something to work with here?
Well, if they come back to council and ask for specific resolutions...
Okay.
...after the first of the year, according to specific goals.
Okay, good. Good, thank you.
Okay, and discussion of city contracts, Ms. Portiffield?
As the council meeting on Monday, I mentioned that the email, all the thought regarding specific projects and disabled and business enterprises, whether included or not. And in addition to that, the affirmative action by two was discussing contracts and what how minority and really business enterprises were included in that. My, what I was told is that they're always included as an agenda, and so, I was asking Mr. and Ms. Palas, if you'd just expand on that, because basically the question was why they would include as a, as the main part of the, of the contract.
Well, if you want to start with the email you referred to regarding, you know, disability requirements and Wrightburg project, the company's basic part of the email, and then the response that we got from the company laying out, where you mean, pointing attention, and the responses to them, and after our review, everything seems to be in order, and the rule is, you know, as he tells you want, basically, that regulation that was cited from earlier this year, if you have an affirmative action program in place, that exempts a company from immediate compliance and they do have an affirmative action program in place. And then the second part of it was a little technical, about the different percent goals on the project, but if you go through it, you see the disabled goal, the minority workforce goal, female workforce goal, that Wrightburg's actually proposing to be above what's required or what the goals are for all of them. And the final part was the apprenticeship program. The city has an apprenticeship program requirement for certain city contracts that are funded from the city. When the funding comes from a different source, in this case, federal government, we can't use those requirements unless the federal government has pre-approved our apprenticeship program, and we have not been pre-approved. So, everything that was referenced in that email is, we handle appropriately.
So, these are proposed, so like for number two, they proposed, yeah, three point, no. They, they proposed eight point three, to exceed the goal. So, that, they're, if they fall short of that, because what we've experienced in the past is that there's been some proposed goals, but they've not met them. How, how does that work? If they don't need the goal, even though they proposed it, and they're...
Well, I believe the main contractor is Berman and Judas, and then Wrightburg is the subcontractor for them, and so it was really Berman and Judas's job to make sure that those goals hit, because if not, we're not going to be able to use that federal funding in order to pay them. And we had discussions with them, and that was the sum substance of the conversation that took place.
All those are my questions, because, you know, I want to be able to make sure that I get these... Heidi, will you be as the next affirmative action board member, would you be able to to...
Oh, definitely, I'll, I'll pass on that if I'm not there, so my staff will. And then if you want to move on to the affirmative action goals, the contracts, what we have, and actually, some of this we recently just updated, so it's on all press, but when we put out a bid, it's got a number of different sections. We have 14 boilerplate sections, and then for each bid that goes out, you, you know, put in the sections that you need for that specific project. One of them is the information for the affirmative action goals and our policy, and it's just, I think, on the demo bid, I think, was section two. It doesn't make it any less legally binding for it to be a bendum or added on to the contract. One of the sections is the, we call it the contract, with the general terms and conditions of all the contracts, just lays out the work to be done, when it has to be done by, how much you get paid, things like that, like our demarcation clauses. So, the whole body together becomes the actual contract, and once the mayor signs that, and the other party signs that, then they're bound to all the terms and conditions in it, and also would actually put in for a bid, so the whole thing is right together as legally binding material.
Other questions regarding city contracts or... And did you have something more to come for government regulations to plan today?
Yeah, sorry, we will have this going on last night, but given that we were re-elected recently, Congressman Taco, who has an office in the building, sent over a new lease, a permanent residential term, and so we can get it done before the beginning of the year. I was hoping they could consider it today. It's a continuation of the contracts we have right now, these two rooms downstairs, $650 a month, and this would run from January 3, 2015, until January 2, 2017.
Questions, candidates?
Will that be a turn space in there?
The lease would be for a turn space, or allow for them to move if that was happening.
Are you wanting to add? Do you want to move to approve this? So, either Mr. Ferrari or Ms. Parazza?
So, move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, okay. Anything else to come before government operations? Has a motion to adjourn?
So...
Or a second to adjourn?
Call for the public safety, fire department vehicle orders, Mr. Palas.
This is a follow-up to the prior following legal legislation that we passed last Monday. A little altered information has come to light that I would like to have included in a resolution regarding that, and then our financing company actually requires resolutions to be included in contracts, and city council just formalizing the need of these vehicles. So, we passed two resolutions last time, and it's easy to do with the, if we amend those two resolutions to have them deal with the financing aspect, and if we pass one further resolution to deal with the bidding. And it's not changing the terms, the conditions, the price, or anything like that, this is just adding a little bit, and making... the price, or anything like that, this is just adding a little bit and making it so we have all the materials needed for the contract.
Yeah, more, be more specific, that's what they're trying to get at.
Correct, it's conforming the wording of the documents to the requirements of the vendors.
Okay. You'll have...
I'll move it if somebody has any questions.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
No, oh, yeah.
You get used to the change.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm looking for you for a second, all right? Any other business for public safety?
I want to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I kept wanting to say aye in city development.
Please, sir, please, let your session. I... Please, more than one second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.